Work session on this Monday, the twenty ninth of January. This is a public meeting, not a public hearing, so no comments from the public will be taken. First item on our agenda today is a discussion or interaction of the minutes for the commercial, the commission work session held on January twenty second, twenty twenty four. If there's no corrections, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Place that motion for vote all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Our next discussion, item number two, is a discussion regarding the Upper Valley Crosswalks. We're joined by staff internally by Mr. Gary Myers and Sean Wilkinson, but also Lane Finley, the ambassador of the Weber County School District, and Dawn?
Yes, Dawn Morse.
Dawn Morse, who represents Snowcrest Junior High. Thanks for being here, Mr. Morse. Mr. Myers?
Wonderful.
Also, hold on.
Yes, sir.
I forgot to recognize Jessica, who's also here in the county in our meeting here today. We have a full commission with Commissioner Bowles seated to my right and Commissioner Forrester seated to my left. All right, now, Mr. Myers, if you'd go ahead.
Yes, sir. So, Commissioners, a few years ago, we, we were contacted by some residents, I don't remember exactly what it was that spurred the, the study, but we did a study on the valley up there in front of the junior high, specifically regarding to the crosswalks. At the time, there were two crosswalks up there. There was one a little bit further north. There's a, there's an LDS church right across from the track up there. And then, as you come south a little bit, closer to the school, correct me if I'm wrong, Principal, but there was a second one down there closer to the school. Now, the, the challenge was, it was a little tricky for residents to know which one, was there really a need for two crosswalks? That was kind of the question and the, and the intent of the study that we did. So, we put out a bid. I got a couple of different bids from, from companies to do a, a, a study for us up there. We also included in that study some other speed areas that we had concerns and complaints about in the valley at the time. Ultimately, the study was done and finished, and it came back to us. And if you, I, I have the, I should have printed more copies off to share with you guys, but I have the results of the study right here in front of me. And if you look, those numbers, AM and PM, represent the number of actual, I know, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Those, those actually represent the number of actual pedestrian crossings on those crosswalks, both morning and afternoon.
Can we just look at it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and.
Black apple clothes. Yeah, that's nice.
When, when you get into the world of, I know, right, I'm sorry. And when you get into the world of crosswalks, there's a manual that governs the signage, the striping, all of that associated with crosswalks. It's called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's put out by Ashtoe Federal Highways. That's actually what governs our usage of roadside signs, as well as how we stripe roads when we design them. According to the warrants for crosswalk studies, we didn't actually warrant even enough pedestrian crossings to warrant a crosswalk. However, to just take them both away in one fail swoop did not feel right. So, what we ended up deciding to do was consolidating and combining them into one crosswalk. Now, the other thing that this led to was there was no actual pedestrian ramp up there in the valley for pedestrians to cross into, in the case of an ADA situation. And so, if, if anyone happened to need, have needs where they needed that pedestrian ramp, whether wheelchair, cane, whatever, there wasn't anything there to accommodate that. So, we actually did a project associated with this, completely separate, where we actually tore out some sections of sidewalk up there, curb and gutter. We put in a pedestrian ramp that is actually in there, updated and installed today. And then, what we did is we restriped the crosswalk to accommodate the crossings into that ped ramp that we built. Where they're crossing from is actually from the trail on the east side of the road, across the road into the pedestrian ramp. And so, that was kind of what we did, and it was, you know, when you, when you, I, when you take away a crossing, I'm sensitive to that, I really am, believe it or not.
Hold on.
Yes, sir. Do you want me to show you where we're going?
You already started setting it there. I was gonna have you, have Sean just pull up the map.
Yeah.
It's important that the people online are able to see it as well.
It really is. And, and we, we kind of were strategic on how we picked where we did the actual pedestrian and ramp, as well as the crosswalk, because knowing students, students, when they're on their way to class, they're on a mission.
Especially that age.
Especially that age, and they're not, their, their, their brains aren't thinking about, uh, how do I engage with traffic in the safest way? Their brains are focused on how do I get to school in the shortest way possible and the fastest way possible, because if they're like me when I was that age, they were running late, or they wanted to meet their friends, or whatever was driving their, their thought process, they, they were usually looking for the shortest, quickest route. And where we located it, if they're coming from the north, it would cause them to have to come down the trail, cross, go back northwesterly along the sidewalk for a couple hundred feet, and then take the front sidewalk into the building. If there's no snow, more likely, Principal, they're probably walking across the grass. Is that, is that fair?
Yep.
Um, and, and so that kind of just sets the stage. You can see where we located that, that crosswalk up there. And we did it there on purpose, because there was a loading zone just north of there that we wanted to give plenty of, uh, space to for cars in and out of that, for the, the bus loading zone there. Um, it wasn't to put a hardship on the.
Zoom in on that a little bit, Sean, so we can kind of see in relationship to the school.
The loading zones right there where it says H W Y?
Uh, not quite. It's, it's the very top edge of the screen there. If you could pull that down a little bit, there, other direction, sorry.
Other way.
There you go. You can see that loading zone, and I believe that's for buses.
Buses, yeah.
And so, the buses are in and out, doing their thing. And so, we didn't really want the crosswalk interacting with that if we didn't have to, um, just from a safety aspect, right? You know, trying to, trying to simplify things. And so, being that that was an existing intersection, that felt like the most natural place to put a, put that crosswalk relocated.
And the other one, Commissioners, was up here.
Yeah. So, have you taken those out?
We did. So, shortly after we did this, Commissioner, we did a, a resurfacing project, and the act, action of milling out the asphalt and repaving it eliminated any
line.
resemblance or history of that. Uh, fast forward to today, that was, oh goodness, two years ago, three years ago?
Summer before.
Summer before. Sorry, time, time flies. Fast forward to today, um, Principal reached out to me two weeks ago and mentioned that, uh, he's had some requests from your, uh, community council. Is that the correct label? And ironically, um, maybe one of the, we'll call them the well-intentioned, uh, moms, or I won't even label them as a mom. One of the well-intentioned residents went up and took it upon themselves to repaint the other crosswalk up there. It's the north one that we got rid of.
Which one did you get rid?
The, the further north one up by the, the track. Yeah, northwest.
Drop off for cars. In the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In here and drop them all back out.
What color paint did you use?
We used white on ours, all of theirs.
It's white.
It's white, okay. So, they did actually get the right color paint.
That's good.
Um, however, to just stripe it is, I, I don't want to call it a huge deal, but it is a big deal, because you're creating, you're, you're creating a crossing that really wasn't warranted, and yeah.
It's okay to say it's unsafe. It shouldn't happen in our roads. We are in charge of those roads, and no one should be in there doing work without authorization.
I'm assuming this well-intentioned person never got permission.
Correct.
No, they never contacted us.
And that's, that's a bad form in itself.
It is.
The problem is now kids are starting to use that crossing again.
Correct.
They are, after it was eliminated, so that's, that's.
Yeah. So, um.
It sounds like there needs to be a little more education with some of those ones.
Well, and the, and the, yes.
But where, what do we, so get to the point.
So, my, my question is, uh, our original study said to consolidate it and eliminate the, the further northwesterly crossing, consolidate it to the southeastern one. The request from the community council was to bring the other one back. My, my thoughts are, my feelings are, I don't like that idea, because it does add that extra. So, so here's what happens from a driver's perspective. Think of it somewhat similar akin to a stop sign. The more we add stop signs into roads, as a driver's using that road, they tend to get a little bit frustrated to wait for the, it might only be twelve to fifteen seconds for the individuals to cross that road, but in the driver's mind, it feels like five minutes. And so, their instant reaction, once the kid gets through the school, is they hit that accelerator, hammer down, get back up to speed for the time they lost, and keep in mind, we're, we're still in the school zone, right? We don't want that kind of activity. We'd rather people keep it down around twenty miles an hour, which is a manageable speed for.
So, would you have flashing lights?
No.
Push a button on?
There's not.
We don't.
Just a pedestrian crossing. It's not a school crossing.
Would you guys want something, you know, like they do here in Ogden City? I mean, the, if looking at those numbers, these don't get used a lot by anybody.
No.
No, we figure there's maybe thirty kids that live to that.
Yeah.
In this subdivision there.
Yeah, that are eligible to walk. Obviously, not all of them do, so.
Overkill would be probably the word for if we put in flashing lights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there?
Well, that's the other issue that's come up.
And that's what brought up. So, since this, so the, the summer, my first summer out there, um, the, the signs were taken down of the, the crosswalk on that northwest side, and nobody really noticed until the first day of school. And now, kids come in and, hey, why am I in the crosswalk? Uh, and one of our teachers nearly hit a kid who was crossing there, because they assumed the crosswalk was still there, right? Um, and since then, obviously, someone's taken upon themselves to repaint that. Um, didn't talk to us about it, obviously, didn't talk to the roads.
Oh, right.
Um, and so, the community council, at least once a month, I hear from someone in the community, and it's really come up in the last few community council meetings that we've had at the school. Why did that crosswalk disappear? How can we get it back? And so, I explained to them, because Gary and I had a great conversation when it disappeared, um, as to why in the study and all that. And the study was done, I think, in twenty eighteen, and twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, that school year, is when it was taken out. Um, and so, then the, the community council's like, well, why did it do it four years to take it out? Um, and, and, you know, they, they bring up all kinds of points, and many of them are valid. Um, but what they, at the very least, what they're hoping for is to at least get the signage back, because people are using that, that area to cross the road. Even in the evenings, we'll have folks that will park at that church across the street, and then use the crosswalk to use our track and just get their exercise in. So, it's not just a school issue, and we're just here representing the community council, really, because we know it's not a, a school um, issue, but it's our students who, who are in kind of harm's way a little bit. And then, of course, in the, in the winter, last year was a very tough winter, and so, there were piles of snow everywhere. And kids, obviously, will be kids, and they'll, they were darting across that road, and we had several near misses. Um, so, the community council would just like to see the signage put back and put the crosswalk there, if possible. Ideally, they did ask if we could put, uh, at least one of them as they pushed on a flasher. We know that's expensive and cost prohibitive, but they, they, they're just worried about their kids and about the folks who use it in the evening time. And I, I can't say I disagree that we want our kids to be safe. And, and if that crosswalk had been there for years and years and years, then just to take it away overnight took a lot of people by surprise and, and upset some folks.
So, does the school district want to see it go back in? From a safe routes perspective, I think it makes sense to have the consolidated crosswalk. To the church by the school, it makes sense from a safe routes point of view with kids coming down to that and crossing. Would there be a benefit to have, uh, some flashy lights there to cross? Yeah, I think that would be helpful, but I don't think there's a justification, given the number of students that live in that northwest area, to have two crossings. I think it's more of a convenience thing. But there may be a bigger community uh, interest in it, and so, we really can't speak to that, but from a safe routes point, I think we're, we're good with the current design with maybe looking at enhancing, you know, adding some lights.
Where is the, uh, hand painted one here or here?
It's the, it's the north. The north one up there by the track.
Where is it on here?
Where those?
Second one?
Yeah.
Or this one?
Well, tho- those are both the same area, and I don't know why the, why the boxes, the text boxes with the actual crossings, they, they were both intended to be for that area, unless they actually caught somebody actually crossing in a non-crosswalk as well, too, but.
Got a question for you, Gary. What's the cost right now of a flashing school?
So.
Four, that, what, four grand, forty-eight hundred?
You're right around, a little under five, a little under five thousand bucks, yeah. And that would get you to a, if I remember right, solar operated, with the battery. The thing we found, we had one of those on a stop sign out west at thirty-five hundred and eighteenth. We got about a year and a half out of the battery, um, and then to replace the battery was, wanna say fifteen hundred bucks, twelve, hundred, fifteen hundred dollars.
So, we've got the ongoing expense, as soon as one of those goes in, the ongoing expansive maintenance. I mean, it sounds simple, but it's a, it's a light or something like that. What about the install? What is, does that include install?
So, that's just the materials. Um, and that's the other thing I was gonna mention, Commissioner, that's assuming it doesn't get hit. Um, and I, and I say that a little bit tongue in cheek. If you recall, last fall, we put in a speed sign on the divide. It was in a week before somebody took it out. Uh, someone was coming down the divide eastbound, lost control, slipped, and hit that, hit that speed sign. So, here's a straight section, uh, shouldn't be too big of a deal, but there is always the chance that when you put those in, someone could, could hit it.
Do you have, from your staff point of view, Mr. Myers, Mr. Wilkinson, a recommendation to this body on what it takes to happen?
My recommendation is, we stick with the one location where we put that pedestrian ramp in. Um, my thought was, is if, if there's really a driving need, if the school could come to the table a little bit and helping us with the cost of the sign, maybe our roads department could install it and operate and maintain it. I don't know if there's a driving need for that flashing sign, but it, they do get kind of expensive, and it comes out of the general fund countywide.
Company, this one comes out of the municipal service.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. There's a little more time, you'll have that.
Although, this, this could potentially, potentially come from our Prop one money there as well.
Well, and that might be from, uh, Commissioner Bowles, do you have a suggestion or any thoughts on this?
Well, there, this is my thought. Uh, the, the kids are gonna cross up here regardless of if you have a crosswalk. They just are. They're not gonna pass the school and cross and go back. As a parent and a former member of community council, I'd say do it. What it looks like, if there's, I mean, it would be nice if the school zone went the whole stretch of that. That's what they do out on fifty-six hundred for, for in elementary.
Hmm, yeah. It's not a school zone, because it's, doesn't meet that criteria, so there's no flashing lights or anything. You just have pedestrian crossings, basically.
I don't know. It, the money's not as important to me as the safety, and the kids aren't, they're not just gonna go because there's one. That's, that's my thought.
Would you put flashing lights at both locations?
Um, like a push button?
Yeah.
I don't know about that. I think maybe only on the north one, where that seems to be the one that's probably used after hours by the rest of the community to access the track or games, or whatever they do, do it for. It, judging by this, there's more traffic on the, that upper one. You know, five and six with those combined, and this is.
And because of the church.
It, I don't know. That's just my thought. I, I know it's more expensive and.
Commissioner Forrester?
And it doesn't, it's not necessary for the safe routing, safe route. I don't know what they call it.
The safeguard extends at about five hundred feet, not having that one to the north.
But if it's a community draw and the community's using it.
And I think that's, talking to Dawn, trying to get ahead of that a little bit before.
And really, their, their main concerns, obviously, they'd love to have the flashing lights, but if they could just have the, the crosswalk and the signage put back, is all they were asking for, on a basic level.
Okay. Well, none of those situations really, you know, make a huge difference. So, if you, you've been up on that road before, there's no sidewalk when they go across, you're on their side of the road. The trail goes up, what I'm gonna call the north side or the south side. When they go across, they're in the road anyway. They're on the edge of the road. So, it's not like you're going in from sidewalk to sidewalk. You're going from the trail system, which, again, kind of disappears there, but it's the frontage to the side of the road. So.
There is a sidewalk that extends to our property.
All the way to the property, right?
To right here.
They do go sidewalk to sidewalk.
Yeah, well, but I'd like, on the other side of the road. When they, when they cross the street, there's no sidewalk on that side.
Oh, to the church side?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Isn't that, isn't that a trail over on the church side?
There's a trail.
It's a trail.
There's a trail, yeah.
But it's, again, right now, nobody, the wintertime, nobody takes time to go plow.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I'm not opposed to putting another crosswalk there. I just, but if the community council has money, they have funds available, I would say, look, if you want the flashing lights, you should at least participate in that. Again, from the usage standpoint, I don't think it's a good use of, of county dollars for a half a dozen people that use that. And again, I know that, that there's not a lot of students, not a lot of people that use that during the school. Uh, most of them travel by bus or car. You probably have more community members going across at night to use the track or whatever over there than you do students. And, you know, football games, whatever you've got there. Practices. I've been there a number of times at night, and, you know, they're not crossing the street. They're coming in by car and going home, so. Um, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm not opposed to the other crossing. I wonder about liability standpoint, if we do that without, that's what concerns me.
With their liability?
Well, you need to have, that you should have somebody there to, to man that crosswalk. If you, if we stripe it, you should have a, a crossing. Does the school do anything?
Not for secondary highs, no.
Not for secondary.
Only for elementary, yes. Only elementary require.
Okay. So, so you probably don't have anybody on the other one to my south.
No.
Is that a, is that a legal problem for us, Chris? If we put that in and then somebody gets hit?
I'd have to see how Utah treats it. There's a doctrine called the Good Samaritan doctrine, which is sometimes you get punished for doing the right thing. Uh, if you make a situation worse, so. I'll have to look and see where Utah falls on that. But we'd probably have a good amount of immunity under the Government Immunity Act. I would think that we would be okay.
You know what? Looking at this there, I think, uh, uh, valid points on both sides. I, one is, uh, when you do a community council, you usually ask permission of the school and the cities. At least that was the case when I chaired and we put in the playground at Age Guy Child. It was a magnificent playground out there. Hundred thousand dollar project back thirty years ago. You know, so that's pretty substantial. So, for people, and people will do things, we, I, I don't want to use the word, uh, the tag, that's what they've done, is they've tagged the road. Lane, you get all this. You've been down that road a lot of times, but I think, uh, Dave, if you want to get your community council rallied to raise some money for those people, I wouldn't be opposed. We're gonna, the county's gonna end up eating the ongoing expense, which is gonna far exceed the life of the crosswalk, and the monies, uh, than the, than putting in signs. Keeping in mind that you're looking at, you're looking at at least ten grand, just for the cost of the material, but if the county does involve on it.
If I may, really, the signs they're looking for are just the, the general signs.
Yeah.
I, I get it. Flashing one would be great.
I, no, I, let's, let's, the, the, the community councils come to you, and you're acting in there, you're coming and saying, hey, listen, we want to do this. How bad do they want it? I think, I, I think we, we want to support them. So, let's do it. If we're gonna do it, let's do it right the first time. And not, I mean, you could do this, yeah, but let's, why not, why not? Let's see, just see, see how serious they are and, and, and see if they could come with some funds, and there, that's an active community up there that, and some of them have means to be able to donate towards a, a crosswalk. Weber County would share in the greater expense by the installation and by the ongoing expense of the sign. But if they really wanted to do it the right way, but ahead of that, um, I don't know that I'd be a, a, opposed to doing. I don't, I don't know that I'd be opposed to putting in that sign, but I don't know that we'd want to maintain two of them. It looks like, again, by the numbers, that that one up by the track's gonna get used more, but that disadvantages the ones coming from the southeast and advantages the ones coming from the northwest. So, that, don't you see it? I like that way. So, but the big thing for me is that they, I think you're, and I don't know this, because it's been a lot of years since being up there, but when you're having competitions or sports games, most people tend to park, use that parking up there and come across, and so it does have some advantage for the community up there as well, but, but I would like, I'd like to see the, since the community council's obviously interested in this going in so much as they're willing to break the law by striping the road, and that, I'll call it as it is.
They might not be part of the community council.
Doesn't matter.
The artist.
Don't know, but it was just represented that it was a member of the community council, sorry.
A member of the community.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I heard community council, then I, I retract that. I'll take that back.
Member of the community.
Yeah, but he, whatever the case, is that, let's, I, that's the direction I'd go. I think to give clear conversation, I'm okay to, to probably do that. Go, Chris, you had a comment?
I was gonna mention, the Government Immunity Act mentions crosswalks in two ways, and I don't think it's really gonna be as relevant here, because we're talking about the actual, like, condition of the road. So, latent defects or completely immune, uh, known defects or anything like that, we waive immunity, but they have to show that we were negligent. However, putting in a crosswalk, I think would fall under the discretionary function, which we do have in the uniform. So, would you, we'd have significant protections.
Good. Okay.
Um, that's, so that's kind of, I, I'm okay with, like you said, maybe putting in those signs, but those signs, the nice thing about the type of sign we put in, one location, the nice thing about that is they can be upgraded to the better way to do it. You know, they just want to sit back, how interested really are they? Do they want to do it right, or do they just kind of want to just make, make, you know, and?
Yeah, the other thing to think about is if.
Oh, we don't have those, those curbs, though, those nice curbs and.
I was just gonna say, if you're gonna do it, you, you probably ought to have the ADA ramp up there to accept the crossing, which, if I remember correctly, and this was three or four years ago, we were into that about four thousand dollars in concrete work. But, and that feels high. I get it, your initial knee jerk, but think about it. The contractor we hire has no other work he's doing up there, so he has to mobilize all his equipment, everything up there on site for one little spot. Um, and then, he's bringing a load of concrete in as well, too, right? And there's costs associated with just onesie twosie types, type work, if that makes sense.
And you've already said that the numbers don't justify the.
They really don't. They really don't.
Commissioners, if I may, we, we had this crosswalk there previously. There is some precedent for it, whatever we want to call it. If we can spend that money out of Prop one, that's a drop in the bucket. This provides for safety. It meets the needs or the wishes of that community right there, and it, it's, it really doesn't cost that much. I agree that, right now, I don't think we put in any electronic signs. I think we just put in the regular signs. We paint the crosswalk. We do the approaches, and we step back.
Hey, you do the approaches ADA complaint?
Yes.
Are you okay if it comes out of Prop one?
Oh, yeah, I think.
I'm okay with that.
So, what, we talked in concrete's four grand?
Probably right in that neighborhood.
Either the signs are what, a couple grand, three grand?
No, the, the, those are the, those are the.
Offensive signs.
These signs will cost us a hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah. They're only a couple hundred bucks for the non.
Not.
Yeah.
Okay, well, there you go.
But if the council wants to any up, they don't, if they're not happy with that, I would just say.
Well, they want to upgrade and have.
They wanna, if they want an upgrade. Yeah, if they want first flash, then they gotta pay.
Well, we're already, again, there's another, that's, that's pretty good, is we're, we're adding the crosswalk, everything else. Least they could do is come to the table with the.
Yeah.
I think that would be appropriate if we're going that far.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds like a great plan, and we need to come from the community council.
Where, where exactly would that go? Would you mind? You don't want us on that.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Sure.
If we're talking about the flashing one, are you guys in agreement that you would put it on the northwestern side?
Yeah.
Go to the other one?
Where it's always been, yeah.
I, I would think so.
It would be shown on that.
Yeah. Yes. This one right here is where you.
Yeah.
That's where we have it now. The second one would be.
Where they used to be.
Yeah.
With flashing.
Church, yeah.
It'd be, let me just draw a quick line.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Oh, for.
You know, if they want to fund two signs, both directions, there you go. But we're, that's not, we'll put this one in and then they can go from that.
I think that's a good, there's a good chance we can use Prop one on that.
That's, that's every member of this, that's every member of the county participating in this, not just the locals. So, that's pretty good, theoretically speaking. That's where you're talking, Gary?
Yeah, that's where the second one would be added back in.
And why, so, just another question, why would you put that crossing there by that private residence and not over there by the church? Why not move it across the street?
That's where the, uh, trail just sort of ends, right there, so.
So, the.
Either way.
People are gonna have to cross the, get to the crosswalk if they're using that parking lot.
You could, I mean, you're kind of, whether you pick the north side or the south side of that street extending to the east, you're kind of splitting hairs there, whether it's, whether it's on either side.
Except the number of people who will cross. Except the number of people who will cross, not on the crosswalk. If you park at the church and you, and you, and you. Get to the closest part of the track.
You could also argue if you're at the church, you're encountering cars backing up, pulling into parking lots, parking slots, excuse me.
Like any parking lot.
I'm gonna give you Scott Jenkins, oh, come on, Gary.
You asked where it was historically, I drew a line.
That's where it was?
That's where it was.
That's where it was.
And that's the one that had the two crossings, one in the morning, one at night, and then further was three and five, further. No, I'm just talking for all the lazy people.
All in front of the church and all that other. If I'm a guy that lives in that house, I'd rather see it across the street over by the church. You're gonna, I think, I, sorry, I'm gonna put a little more ahead, uh, you're gonna encourage more parking by the sign and stopping there, I think that. Shoulder on the road is wider over there by the church and you got those parking stalls, there's more room to get out of the way, I'd like to see it over a cross.
And plus it saves you doing one of the curbs.
Yeah, well, I, I wasn't intending on doing anything on the trail, I was only intending on doing it on the.
We're gonna do it on the other side, not the trail.
From a safe house perspective, it would probably be better to have it moved up, just because you got kids that come along one sixty two. That's one less road they would have to cross. From a safe house perspective.
You think your community council will object to that location, cause that's where it was?
Where is it painted now?
Yeah, yeah, so it was. It was about right here, so we're talking about putting it up here.
Just have their Michelangelo with Valley come put some black paint down over the one they.
We'll, we'll take care of it.
Nobody's watching.
We appreciate you, okay. As you know, we're not in the crosswalk business, kind of school property, appreciate the hardship. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you so much, glad to get time to come in.
Thanks, guys, we'll see you. This is Bronco, he got there with boots on the ground looking at this.
Yeah, yeah. Before you do that, I need to go up and.
There you go, Gary.
Ross, you sir.
Okay, let's move on to item two on our agenda, which is a discussion regarding the C and D landfill. Uh, management agreement, Mr. Wilkinson, we'll invite him, we'll just pause for just a moment.
Finished a little early, didn't we? No, no, no. It's not like me to finish early, is it?
Gary, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
You're moving on to a week almost, you okay?
I'm fine, I get to talk to her this afternoon. It's a good day, it's a good day, so, I will see you guys shortly, okay?
I get it.
Sorry, Jen.
Oh, please.
Did you even finish early?
You wait for Cortland or what?
Cortland is online.
Oh, Cortland's there. So we wait for them.
I think we can go ahead.
It's all yours.
I think that was a good discussion and I'm anxious for. I'm anxious for those people that care, I'd love to see a flashing light up there.
I bet they'll raise the money.
I'll bet they will too, those people are good people, they care. Let's proceed on to item number, item number three on our discussion today, which is regarding the C and D. Management agreement, Mr. Wilkinson, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners, we have an existing management agreement with Molding and Sons LLC. Uh, we have three previous amendments to that agreement and. Over the years, we have changed things a little bit, uh, one time we, we put in scales, so we changed the way that we build. Uh, we went to a tonnage fee, uh, and in some of the others, we've just increased the amount that. Uh, the tipping fee and then we've increased the amount that comes back to the county. Now, in the agreement right now, there's a provision that says we should negotiate the county's payback. Every five years, so Molding and Sons pays us a certain amount of the gross tonnage that goes into the landfill. They are asking for an increase, as you're aware, of the tipping fee from eighteen to twenty eight dollars per ton.
Didn't we just do that?
We, so, we had the first reading of our ordinance and that is in there. And I've mentioned, in addition to that, they will increase what they pay back to the county from two dollars and fifty cents per ton. To four dollars per ton, however, when we read the agreement, we had that five year provision in there and it has only been three years. Since the last time that fees were changed. So, what we're going to do is amend that provision, we're going to change it from five years to three years in the agreement. That way, a- and I think that makes sense, given the, the economy that we've had over the last several years, five years seems like a long time for us to wait. Uh, to be able to, to get that increase or, or adjust fees, and typically, we're not willing to adjust. Our fee, or we're not willing to allow Molding and Sons to increase the tipping fee unless the county is getting reciprocation for that as well. So it makes sense on both ends, they have agreed to that and they have already signed that agreement. Changing the provision from a five year negotiation to a three year negotiation timeframe.
Christopher, this is in your portfolio.
Yes, it is.
Do you have comments regarding this?
No, it makes sense, we've already agreed to the fee.
Exactly.
So that's already done, I, I wasn't aware of the five year versus three.
Yeah, we got, looking at that, I, I talked to Cortland and we talked to Moldings and we all agreed that. That is what it said, so we needed to change it.
So even though it was done on the basis of a cost increase.
Yes.
This falls under that five year provision.
Yes, so if, if you didn't want an increase in the county's fee right now, then we could have just gone with the five years. But that didn't make sense, because eighteen to twenty eight dollars per ton is, is a big increase, granted, this is only the. Second time, I believe, in fifteen years that we've increased fees, but it makes sense that the county gets some of that back.
No, I, so I'm total support, Mr. Chitter, I think three years makes a lot more sense in this economy, we've got five years. You can see, you know, you can see twenty percent, twenty five percent inflation. Over five years, very, very easily. So, anyway, I'm good with.
So, Mr. Bollos?
Nothing else.
Can I recap for you what this will do? So, the tipping fee right now is eighteen dollars per ton, there are some other fees for specialty items, but tipping fee is eighteen, it will go to twenty eight. The county currently pays twelve dollars per ton for what we take out there, that will increase to fifteen, and we, we've talked about that. And now, what molding pays back to the county will increase from two fifty to four dollars per ton. So, those are the changes that are happening.
And that, the four dollars is both for ours and the public, right?
Correct, we get four dollars per ton regardless of who takes it.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
That's right.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, that's it, we just, it's on your agenda tomorrow for the amendment to the agreement, fourth amendment. Plus the final reading of the fee ordinance, so we just wanted to be, make sure you were aware of, of all of those changes.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, that's good.
Good job, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay. Great.
Wow, you're back on schedule.
Thank you.
Wow, will you get.
Us, will you get Ms. Russell and Mr. Quinny? We'll move on to item number four here shortly. Great, that was a great, great thing.
I swapped stakes though with my date.
Yeah, I heard that.
Cause she likes it bloody and I like it well done.
Takes the flavor out of it. It's okay, let's move on to item number four on this, this is a discussion regarding the CRA schedule update. Mr. Quinny and Ms. Russell, go ahead.
Okay, we're gonna make this short and sweet, um, uh, Quinny and I just wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at with our CRAs and then. Also where we're at with our policy revision, so, um, do you want me to head out with Chromalox or do you wanna go over that?
I think Chromalox, yeah, probably our.
Yeah, so tomorrow, we had kind of a, a, we took kind of a little break during the holidays, uh, on creating Chromalox, but we're ready to move forward with that. Just to give you guys a break and we had some other things going on, on the twenty eighth that we didn't want to bring Chromalox into that meeting, just cause it was so booked out. So, we have two items on your agenda tomorrow, the first is to adopt the project area plan and budget. Um, for Chromalox and that'll be item one, and that's already been approved by the CRA, we just need to have that agreement approved by the commission.
That was in ordinance, the ordinance. Oh, so we're, when you say adopt plan and budget, that's.
We have a contract, we have an agreement between the CRA, that CRA has adopted the pla- project area plan and budget, we have a contract that. Ties the CRA and the commission together to move forward.
Yeah, so this is the one where Weber County will be funding the CRA with tax increment, so it's a, it's basically an agreement between. Weber County and the CRA, which you are the governing body of both, so, one of your signatures will be on one line and the other one will be on another. Uh, but that's where we're, Weber County will share.
So we, we've already had Sharon sign CRA part, we just haven't executed this contract with the commission, cause we took a little pause.
Got it.
And that'll be first.
Any questions on that, Commissioner?
No, makes sense.
So, and then we'll go into the first reading of the project area plan and budget to adopt it by ordinance.
Okay, yes.
And Quinny can give you any information, if you have any questions about that, it's the same project area plan and budget that we've presented to you over and over and over. And, and once that is adopted, we have a thirty day grace period before we submit it to the Lieutenant Governor for actual creation.
We've learned that there are a lot of steps to a CRA area and project when it's the county's CRA. When we have to run it through our own agency, so unincorporated Weber County projects that have a CRA over it. Lots of meetings, lots of steps, agreements going all over the place.
Timeline.
So you might have just heard Chromalox so many times over the last several months, it's because there are so many steps here. When we are just a participating entity and some other agencies cut, is handling it, like Ogden City, Washington Terrace.
One or two meetings.
Yeah, they just come up with an agreement, we say it looks good and then we approve it in a commission meeting, but, um. Lift for Chromalox.
It is, and it feels like you guys have been going back and forth and back and forth between the CRA and the, and the commission and that's just how the process works. So between getting all the, all the agreements together for the, uh, participating districts, which would be the fire and the school district in the case of Chromalox. And then the county, in the case of Chromalox, and then now we'll have the county actually go forward and create the actual project area. And make it official with the state.
So, uh. Look, we trust you to keep us safe, and there's a process that's already been defined and described as long as. And Ms. Russell, as long as you help us through process, and Mr. Quinny, if you keep us safe, which keeps the county safe. Uh, that's, that's what we want to do. Any questions, Commissioner Bollos, Commissioner Frower?
No.
It's just been a long time since we've created one, so we've kinda had to revisit the state statute and. And, uh, put this together, um, just a quick, quick update, we're working with Economic Development Finance Committee. To, uh, create a policy for recommendation on how, uh, we will actually do CRAs in the county. And the first step of that is, is our own CRAs and creating a policy for ourselves on creation of CRAs. Um, with some recommendations from the Economic Development Finance Committee, the second piece of that will be. Um, how we participate with other cities relative to CRAs and what our criteria and judging criteria look like. And then how we can work more effectively as a economic development committee, economic development finance committee, um, with, with you as the CRA. With you as, as the commission moving forward on these, on these really important, uh, projects, we want to make sure that we're in compliance with the state statute. We want to make sure that we're in compliance with the state auditor, and we want to make sure that we are providing the best use of our public funding. For our tax, our tax, our taxing entities and our taxing, and our citizens in the county. So we're excited to be able to hopefully get that to you in the next couple of months for adoption. Uh, and we'll review and then potentially adoption, so, just a quick update on what we're doing, um, that committees. Uh, as you know, that committee is, um, created, uh, with Sean and I, uh, with, we have Quinny on that committee. Um, we have, uh, John Bond in that committee, uh, Scott Park, Stephanie Ebert. Um, so, and we then recently added Charlie Ewart, because that committee also reviews our PID policies. And we want to make sure that we're in lockstep with our planning department and their, and where they're at with their development agreement. Before we even consider creating PIDs, we want to make sure we're in lockstep with the planning department, so Charlie's been added to that committee. More for PIDs than CRAs, but, um, we've had some pretty good success, keeping everybody on the same path and in compliance with the state statute.
Did you say on the same path?
I sure did. Any questions for me, Quinny or Sean? Well, you'll see, see myself and Quinny tomorrow at, at commission.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate it.
We're excited about this one.
Commissioners, I'll accept a motion to saunter for seven minutes.
Seven or eight?
Okay.
All right, motion to saunter. Till two, two PM.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks.
You have a three years, we'll get it signed within.
Yeah.
Give it to us.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring this meeting into order.
You like a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to cease to saunter.
Second.
Have a motion to cease to saunter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. This is the discussion regarding the orchards, phase two and three, and Bureau of Reclamation crossings. We have Ms. Ada Lot, Mr. Grover, who is absent with us today, Mr. Myers, Tucker White, Lacy Richard, Brian Bayless, Steve Anderson, who's absent, Mark Staples absent, Courtland Erickson absent. Hopefully, we got the heart of the matter. Let's move forward. Ms. Ada Lot, you are listed first if you'll go ahead and lead or turn that time over.
Sure. If you recall, this, this bit of land went through a rezon process with the county commission last year. Steve Burton actually was the project manager over that, and I've kind of taken over the, the current planning processes from him, so I, I hope I'm mostly up to speed, but I trust Lacy and these guys will, uh, correct me if I misspeak on anything. Um, these two, there are two phases that are going to be coming before you a week from Tuesday. And this particular development came with a development agreement, as most of the rezones do. Um, their development agreement outlined a, an approval process. It's a little bit different than what we typically see. Uh, typically, a subdivision will go before the planning commission, excuse me, a large subdivision will go before the planning commission for preliminary. They'll go back to them for a recommendation of final. And then they come before the county commission, mostly all buttoned up for that final approval. This particular development, um, outlines the approval process as follows. So they've already been before the planning commission for a preliminary approval. They will come before you for a second preliminary approval. And then they will get their final approval from the planning director, um, administratively. Does that sound familiar?
That sounds familiar, doesn't it?
It does. Yeah, I think we've had that discussion.
Yeah, we trust that planning director.
Geez.
Um, I just wanted you guys to kind of be aware, because by the time we get to you for final, typically, we're just kind of giving you an overview. This is a presentation when it comes before you in the meeting that will probably have a little bit more detail where they're getting their preliminary approval from you. But I'll go through some details with you right now, so that this sounds familiar in a week or two. The, these subdivisions are the orchards, excuse me, the orchards at JBC Ranch, phases two and three. They consist of single-family lots as well as townhomes. And I'm going to read you just a little bit here, because I don't quite have it all memorized yet. Um, with the addition of these two phases, the developer will have approvals for two hundred sixty-three out of their total seven hundred twenty-five units. Okay? Um, these particular projects include fifteen single-family cluster cottage lots, and one hundred townhome units with three acres of open space.
Say those numbers again.
Yeah. Um, fifteen single-family clustered lots.
Okay.
And one hundred townhome units.
Okay.
Okay.
Are any of those clustered family lots senior?
Over the first one.
Okay.
Um, let's see, so after this, they'll have four hundred and sixty-two remaining units to go through the approval process. Um, these are located in the R three zone. I apologize, I wanted to bring up kind of an overview or an overlay for you, but I don't have the Zoom information. And I think if there's anything else other than, uh, going through Bonavista, let me pull up their kind of general, culinary and sewer information here. We've got preliminary will serve letters for all of these per our ordinance, and so prior to them recording, we will request those final approval letters for water and sewer. Um, the open space, I'm going to actually have Lacy speak to that as far as ownership and maintenance of that open space. I don't believe the open space in these phases will be dedicated to the public.
It will.
Oh, it will, okay. You can note that in here.
The M D has it dedicated to the public, and the H R will keep maintaining it except for, um, some of the specific areas like the trail that the county agreed to take on.
Okay, thank you. Um, you have any questions for me or for the developers here?
Just the maintenance of the trails. I don't remember that we were going to maintain those trails, Gary.
I don't believe I was involved in that discussion, to be honest with you.
Sorry.
I have to go back and look, because I don't.
I think there's the specific one that runs up the side of the park.
Yes.
Is the one that I think.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
Yeah.
That's right. But the other trails that are in there, if there's a discussion on those, I don't, I have to go back and look.
Yeah, I think I will check.
Yeah, we had that, I think it is just that main trail, I don't think, yes.
Does that connect to other trails in the area, that main part?
The main one though.
The main one does. And I, now you say that, I do remember that, but I don't remember the other ones, but let's check on that. But Commissioner, I don't think, I think it was just the main one, and then on the parks, um, is the park district going to take over? Okay.
No, so the way that the M D has written.
So that's why you guys are going to maintain the parks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Must you want them?
So, in regards to the trails, Lacy, uh, are we just talking resurfacing? Are you thinking of them being plowed in the wintertime?
I don't, I don't think we intended to have them plowed.
Okay. Because I don't believe we have equipment to do that on a smaller scale.
Yeah.
We, we do roads, but, but you're talking whole different equipment than what we have.
Yeah, but how, how. Sure.
There's not much need for it.
Probably not as big of a need, I just was maybe speaking.
This is not a valley.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's fair.
Our snow melts out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or blows away.
Yeah, so I, I think in terms of the, the trail right next to the road is going to be maintained by the county.
Um.
Um, the infernal trails, though, those won't be maintained, and yeah, they're asphalt trails, so they warm up pretty good, the snow melts quickly. So I think we're being in good shape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, it's, I, I know this question always comes up, just a little bit different arrangement, but it was written with, um, when, you know, someday, this isn't unincorporated anymore, it will be maintained by the city that takes the park.
What city would that be?
Great question.
Are there still ongoing discussions between the two po- potential cities?
Um, yes. Not want to say.
Yeah.
We'd love, we'd love to chat with that, there's some, but they were, they were open too, but there hasn't been that much of an appetite in the past.
Yeah. Questions, commissioners?
You know that.
Ms. Ada Lot, any other? With this presentation?
No.
Questions to the petitioners? Okay. Thanks for bringing us up to speed.
We, we, we had a little bit of a celebration. When was it, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Something like that. We had our first final plat approved.
Oh.
Through your excellent planning administrator, that's the word I was looking for, planning administrator about two weeks ago. So we got back to the office and ringing the bell, and it was great, so we're excited to finally get going out there.
So you think, uh, when will you start laying out infrastructure?
I hope this week.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll be out there, we'll be out there trying to do it this week.
Good. Just before cabin season, that'll be perfect.
Jay's already got his cattle moving off, so he's in good shape. He's sitting pretty.
Very good. All right, wonderful, congratulations. Thank you, Tammy, for leaving the discussion, doing this. Rick, Sean, Gary, I still don't know what you're, anyway.
All right. Crack the whip, crack the whip.
Great.
Um, commissioners, if I may, just for a quick brief on this, we, um, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but Brian and Courtland and Lacy have been back and forth over our Bureau of Reclamation crossing agreements. As recently, we've kind of decided to view that as we would at any application under our excavation ordinance. Uh, initially, we discussed concern about settlement of the Bureau of Reclamation line. The excavation ordinance shrinks the window of time from down to three years, that we would, we would hold a escrow for that, for that crossing, in case there's any settlement. So just as an update for you, that's kind of what we've ultimately.
Navigated.
Navigated to is a good way of putting it, and that's kind of where we're at, and everyone seems to be comfortable with, with that language, if you have any questions, but I know I, I mentioned that to you, because Courtland, I think, was going to, Brian, answer your question, he wanted to make sure everything had been ironed out on the agreement, it was good to go, and he, I'll just wait for his signal before I get it signed and get it turned into we were basing.
Okay.
So.
So you guys are okay?
Yes.
Gary, this is Courtland, are you able to hear me there right now?
We can, yeah, thanks for jumping in, Courtland.
Yes, you're welcome. Um, one of the lingering questions that I want to make sure the commissioners are aware of, and that we have some kind of agreement on, is the assurance that the developer will still be around through the duration of that warranty period, because the last crossing may not, you know, be disturbed, or the installation of the improvements put in until near the end of the time when the development is, uh, getting close to being done, if it's done in multiple phases, or, or whatever happens, and there, they, they told me the other day, the master development agreement actually addresses the, uh, remedies that the counties might have if the developer, this particular LLC gets dissolved, and worst-case scenario, things go bad. And worst case scenario, things go bad, the county's left holding the bag on the costs of making any repairs. The proposed agreement does say that the obligations under the agreement to make any repairs would go to any successors of this LLC, which ultimately could simply be the landowners, the property owners, the purchasers of the various lots in that area. So worst case scenario, we might have to encounter a situation where we are having to go after lot owners or maybe an HOA. Try to get them to pay for any repairs to the Bureau of Reclamation pipes. Just want to make sure the Commissioners are okay with that risk and maybe give the developers some opportunity to address that if they would like to.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Do you have any concerns with that?
I think it would be, I don't have concern, but I think it would be in the best interest of the founding, just to make sure. So that we're covered as a, you know, stranger things have happened. So I think representing the citizen, it's probably good business for us to protect that. So, so the answer is, is no, I don't have concern. I mean, how old are you? Forty, fifty, sixty years old?
An old man.
No, but I meant that, I meant the company, so. I mean, you've got tenure, but it's, it still would be a good thing to.
Have assurances. So, so the development agreement runs with the land, right? So that would be transferred to whoever our successor is. So if we were out of the picture, let's just say if we're not the one who builds this all the way through, that those obligations would be assigned to our successor. Right? So this is in the event that after, let's just say, five years, we worked all the way through that, the project. We're crossing the Bureau of Reclamation that final time and that road or whatever the utility is, right? And then within that three-year period of time, we would have to go away. We would just disappear. I guess the risks of that, yeah, it's a good question. Who does that fall to? If you had a leak out there. Maybe you'd go to Zeke, talk to the Bureau of Reclamation. I mean, at that point, we will have put in our improvements and we'll have a bond on the roads and sewers in our very last phase, right? Otherwise, we're continuing to develop, and so we're still going to be there. We're still going to be developing things. I'm just trying to think through what is the real risk of us not being there or our successor being there? That falling to lot owners, I don't know how that would bind to individual lot owners. It would have to fall to the H O A. And so I think we could probably put some language in it that says the H O A would pick up that obligation in the event that something does happen, because I, I would hate for that to, you know, a special some, yeah, a special assessment to all of the H O A or something like that.
Mr. Erickson, does that sound reasonable?
I think so. If we can get some kind of language in the agreement, and that might have to be memorialized or somehow recorded against the property that the H O A would take that responsibility. That's certainly an option if you're comfortable with that.
I think it's a, you know, I don't, I don't see that as a probability at all, but I think what my intention is, is to protect citizens of Weaver County as a whole.
You know, just, just to let you know, you'll still have the money.
I got it.
There's nothing in the development agreement that would be worthy of this head applicable in this situation, is there?
Just that it runs with the land, so if another entity picked up the development rights, it would go with that. But in a lot of ways, it's really similar to just the same improvement bond, you know, that you have on the roads or the warranty on, on some of the infrastructure. Anyway, you know, that's because we're not just, we're not just guaranteeing that we'll fix it if it breaks. We have a financial charity behind that that will survive that for years.
And that, and that is kind of an interesting, I mean, it's almost like a bill, it's almost like a, like a cash. I mean, you, you guys are sitting on thirty thousand dollars of cash with this letter of credit. It's a letter that you guys have, and when you, if we don't, if, if we didn't within that three-year period of time, even if we went belly up, I think that letter of credit still exists. I don't, yeah, so, so I think you guys were covered in that if if there was a leak, let's just say that final year, you know, after two years, there's that final year and we're not around anymore. You guys still have that letter of credit that you can go into the financial institution and pull and get that money. So I'm just wondering if we don't even need to put it on the H O A because we are on the hook or our successor is on the hook indefinitely.
I would only, oh, sorry.
And the letter of credit is still in effect. Go ahead, Courtland.
Yeah, I was going to say that would only be an issue, and again, talking worst case scenario, and possibly, because I've heard the Commissioners many times say, why did that old commission do that way back then? We're having to clean up all their problems now. Totally worst case scenario, if several of the crossings ended up not getting completed and you know, all finished until right before the end of the project, then we would have thirty thousand dollars. But what if again, worst case scenario, things went wrong with all of them two years after the developer wound up the project and was out of here. I don't know what the cost would be if thirty thousand dollars would be enough. I just want to put everything out on the table, make sure everybody's comfortable that we will be okay. Yes, the letter of credit would handle everything up to thirty thousand dollars. It would only be an issue if there were expenses in excess of that, and that might be a question more for Gary, but I don't know if he can even know, depending on how many repairs needed to be done during, during that time. It really varies.
And, and great question, Courtland. Thank you for asking that. Honestly, each crossing is going to almost be its own independent expenditure, just depending on what the impacts would be. And so that's why we went with kind of a broad brush stroke of the thirty thousand dollar number, hoping, hoping that however far down the road, should anything happen, hopefully that thirty thousand dollars is enough to cover any improvements and repairs that need to be done. So tough to answer that question, Courtland. Just because I don't know how far in the future we're talking about and what repairs would, that would consist of.
And one more thing that might be helpful to think about in the discussion is that these crossings don't go across the whole project. They start on that east side and go, what, maybe a third of the way? Quarter of the way on some of it, and that's the site we're starting on. So, I mean, you're right, anything could happen, but that's the site we're developing.
Yeah.
Right now, and we've got a lot to go to the west that doesn't include crossings.
Right. How many crossings?
This has been a long time since we went to that now. Do you remember Lacey and Brian?
Up to thirteen-ish?
I was going to say right around.
An application pending with the Bureau that is pretty far along in the process. It's not completely approved yet, but once that gets approved, it'll eliminate several of them.
So, yeah, I remember we talked about that.
Yeah, their, their application would sever some of those lines and shorten them and eliminate significant number. So that's good, right? I mean, so.
We like that.
Yeah, and, and they are important. We're motivated to maintain those things. They keep the groundwater down out there.
They're getting you those as much as the Bureau does.
Yeah, if not, if not, if not more, maybe more.
Mr. Erickson, do you have anything else to comment?
No, I don't. I, I appreciate Brian and Lacey being patient with us as we worked through this and working with us to come up with something that'll be in the best interest of the county and allow the development to move forward.
Everyone's been great to work with.
Thank you. Commissioners, if there's no other comments, thank you very much. Appreciate you for coming in. We're going to accelerate the item number six on our agenda, and we're going to just talk about this street tree ordinance. We've got Mr. Cobaid, Mr. Grover, Mr. Ewer, Mr. Wilkinson, Liam Keogh, hopefully will join us soon. And Mr. Erickson. You're listed first, Mr. Cobaid. Go ahead.
I guess that means I'm the best, right?
However, you, yeah, absolutely. Who would ever doubt that?
Well, our current street tree ordinance is best summed up in young sentence, because it only is one sentence long. It just says that the planning commission shall direct developers to install street trees. That's it.
Wow.
So knowing that that well, knowing several things, actually, knowing that developers crave more than anything predictability in the process as well as general guidelines that they can work within and around and through. We've developed a ordinance that would help protect the interests of the county while providing the predictability that developers crave. And this code, we feel like goes a long way towards that. Especially when it comes to street trees. Now, street trees are a controversial thing, surprisingly. Some people, even in this room. Can appreciate their aesthetic beauty while not necessarily desiring them. But street trees.
Chopping them down.
I smile while chopping them down. Street trees provide a, a great service for the community in both terms of aesthetic things as well as you know, they, they provide a, a traffic calming effect. They help protect against an urban heat island effect. They cool things down. And it just, it's nicer to have trees. So what we've done is two things. First of all, we've given you an ordinance that addresses the requirements surrounding street trees, their installation, their protection, their maintenance, and provides for financial guarantees. And then that will, so that will be adopted by ordinance. And then we've also provided a, a list of street trees that we're recommending be adopted by resolution. And the reason for that is that we don't have to go through public hearings and other things to modify the street tree list. If we get a, a new suggestion in that, that works well in, either out west or up in the valley, we can easily add that to the list by an additional resolution without having to go through public hearings and all that to change the code. So that's why that appears that way. This item was heard by the planning commissions, both of the Ogden Valley and the Western Weaver planning areas and both recommended approval. They did have one item that they would like to see, and it's more of an administrative concern than anything else, but they would like to see the permits for tree removal or modification to be of a no-fee permit. So that if you're having a problem with your tree and you need to remove or replace, you still have to get a permit, but there's no fee, so there's no fee associated with that. I told them jokingly that staff time is all free. We all work for free anyway, so there's no need for any fee ever.
Yeah.
It was a joke.
So you're referring to our excavation ordinance that we would ask them to get if they're digging in the right way? Kind of thing, except this, you guys charge a permit or a fee for that. We do. We do. There would be, this would be a similar kind of permitting process. It would be approved by the planning director. But there would be no fee. Their recommendation was there would be no fee associated with it, and I think we're comfortable with that. I don't think that we're going to see a whole lot of them in the course of a year, frankly, and so. Are over the repairs if there's any to our infrastructure. I'm good with that. Sorry, Gary, this will fall back to you. And now you see why I hate trees.
Here's my issue. If we have an excavation that needs to be done, and there's a tree in the way, why doesn't he just come in and get a tree removal thing? And a tree removal permit, and then, oh, I've got this opened up, I'll just put this pipe in?
Should be exclusive to only the tree.
Yeah, and if there's any thing that goes beyond that, they need an excavation permit.
If they're doing any kind of utility work, it would involve that excavation permit. Anything in the road or in our right of way would be an excavation permit, so. It doesn't say it in here explicitly.
I would want that. I want that take, I'd like to see that happen.
I think that would be in the excavation permit language itself, though.
You're not having to do that if you're getting this one.
Does this address the no-fee?
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's what I'm saying. It's an administrative question. So Bill, if I'm understanding you correctly, we would essentially craft a additional permit that they would come in and apply for, just for trees, and that would be administered by planning side. Unless there's impacts to infrastructure through the exercising of that permit, which point they would involve myself and our department.
Absolutely.
Then is, does that permit allow us to go back to the individual? Because if there's impacts, it's probably from them or whoever they've hired to do the work. I would think they should be liable for the cost of repairs of those impacts. The code does say that. Okay, yes.
So Liam, do you think we're covered with? Do we need to have more language in there that indicates if they do any impact to the infrastructure while removing the tree that they're on the book?
Oh, I think it's finance is, yeah, we could specify that, but it's also kind of just a given point as well. What, because what does it say now? It doesn't say anything about the infrastructure in there, damage to it?
I think our, doesn't our excavation ordinance already have something in there?
Well, I know it does, things like certain ordinances, like the surveying, damage to monuments and that kind of thing. That's all explicitly laid out there.
I think it might be nice to have something in here to, just even though we're covered there, to double cover us here. I don't know if that's too much, but.
To be fair, this additional permit does not exist at this point, so it'd probably have to be something that we hammer out between planning and engineering to get legal's approval of and, you know, bring it before you guys to make sure you're comfortable with how that reads, but yeah.
You're talking about for this permit?
This would be an additional permit in the future to be created.
Yes.
Am I correct in that statement, Bill? So what this says now is that the permit requires four things. First, the exact number of trees to be removed, the location of each within reference to street designations, a statement that the applicant will cut and remove the trees, a statement that the applicant will restore the county property to the satisfaction of the county and will replant such trees as the county may require, where the county may specify. And number four, that the county, that the applicant will indemnify the county against any damage to the county to the county property or to the adjacent property owners and against any injury of persons or property sustained in cutting and removing the trees. You good with that? That's, that's all going to be covered by the permit, and we could even have it just be a checkbox that the initial or something like that on the permit so that they know and are acknowledging that they're responsible both for the removal and the restoration of the county's property.
And at some point, if it becomes overwhelming, we can easily say, you know what, this has gone beyond a tree removal permit.
This is definitely.
This is an excavation permit. Pay a permit fee for that, so Gary can be out there on site.
The guy goes, wow, come on. And there's a griping permit now you're going to have to execute.
Ten thousand dollar fee for griping.
Well, Mr. Farrar?
I think it makes sense. You just, you know, it's going to be few and far between. If somebody goes down, they take a tree out and roots and it damages someone, then you're back in that. I just, you just cover that in that, in this big permit, so.
There will be some circumstances where the tree that has been planted is doing the damage. And I don't know that we want to push the responsibility of repairing that damage onto that landowner. That's one of the biggest issues. I, I don't want to speak for Gary, that a lot of engineers and utility providers and road supervisors don't like about street trees is they can be damaging. Their overall benefit is overwhelming, but they can certainly be damaging, and then Gary's budget gets a, gets a ding if we have to go out there and make those changes, but I don't think that cost should be the burden of the adjacent landowner, just if there if there's some other issue with tree, and they've got to do a tree removal.
Yeah, take a look at the East Bench of Ogden, all the great trees up there that were planted fifty years ago. Now are tearing up the sidewalks.
And making some great jumps.
Yeah, it's a good jump, and they're hitting about every other.
Waterline sewer.
So when people go to replace it, their sewer lines go bad because their drain is clogged up.
Yep.
So trees look good, but they're not all their, you know, after forty or fifty years, they can cause damage. And where even some of these are fast-growing trees.
This ordinance comes with a, a list of approved trees.
Yeah.
We, we copied, well, maybe not verbatim, but copied substantively, Salt Lake City's tree ordinance. So they've got an urban forest ordinance. At some point in time, these areas that will have these street trees will be part of a city. Ogden City, for example, has an urban forest division with an urban forest staff. And so in the future, there'll be hopefully more resources and provisions for the tree canopy.
I do want to be clear too, that these street trees are anticipated to be in areas. This, this came up in the, the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. There were some questions about where these would be required. If we have a designated street cross-section that involves a planting strip, that's where these trees would be installed. If there are cross-sections in the county where there's neither sidewalk nor a park strip to be installed, these street trees would not come into play. So the, some of the very rural, can't say the word.
Rural.
Countryside areas Countryside areas, um, that are, are not impacted with sidewalks or, you know, that kinda thing. Um, it would not have park strips and therefore these street trees, although they may be installed just as a matter of aesthetics, would not necessarily be required.
Yeah.
So.
You, this is, this represents a lot of work.
Makes sense. It's been fun, actually.
There's a lot of work.
Thing I like doing, so I, I've enjoyed it, it's, it's been less work and more feeling like, uh, I'm helping to make a difference.
That's good. Is this adopting the tree list or do we pass a resolution to adopt the tree?
Yeah, it would be two parts, one would adopt the section of the code and the other would, uh, by resolution, adopt the street trees list.
The reason for that is the street tree list could change, and we don't wanna have to come back here and have
Yeah.
Go to the planning commission and then have a public hearing with all levels.
Right.
And you verified all these trees are restricted to a certain size based upon the park strip, I'm sure.
Yes. Yeah, that's why they're in the category.
Right.
I'm glad somebody wanted to do that. Wow, because Commissioner Harvey's gonna double check all these and that. There's, there's one that's misquoted, look out, look out.
I'm in, I like this arboring thing, this is great.
Um, just as a heads up too, Cortland, um, did a great job reviewing the ordinance and the, um, code section that the planning commission looked at is changed in very minor ways from what you had in front of you, and I made those, those corrections in addition, mostly typos. Um, and, uh, wording clarification kinda thing, nothing substantive. Um, so that's what's in front of you right now is the Cortland approved and reviewed, uh, language, so that's what you've got.
Well, we like that Cortland Erickson.
Yeah, he does alright.
It's a little wordy sometimes, but it's pretty good.
Have to tell him to quiet down, lie down.
Yeah. Commissioners, any other questions pertaining to this question?
Great work, right, good job. Okay, if you're okay, then we'll bring this to you, not tomorrow, but.
Week from tomorrow, that's all. And I'm looking forward to you talking more about the, uh, Ferris macro parfa. Tree.
Yes. The big chief label.
Most ver oak. Okay, Commissioner, that's, uh, that's it.
That's it?
All right, that's it, what that completes our agenda, worst case, I just wanna call your attention to the efficiency of.
I'm so proud of you.
Uh, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
You can adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion carries, we are adjourned.